Please to open the Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, Hybrid Meeting of the Air Planning Board. This meeting hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID 83365480732 or by calling 9292056099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at DRuizAir.Mass.us or 978772-8220, extension 144. Prior to the meeting. First item is to approve the agenda.
It's right here.
You don't mind, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I had the wrong agenda in my hand.
What's this?
Nope, it's the wrong agenda.
I was gonna say, what the heck?
Yeah, no, I picked up the rate reviews and circulated them by mistake. I hope they had a successful meeting.
Okay, great.
Mr. Diskin found it within 30 seconds. It was a test of Mr. Diskin. He got to it right away. I'd like to move to approve the agenda as presented. Move to approve the agenda for the Hybrid Planning Board meeting as presented.
Second. Great. Any discussion? Everything okay with the order? We're good? Okay. I'll go around. Mr. Diskin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
And the chair says aye, it's approved. Our, I believe, our first item?
Yeah, I'd like to move to continue. Move for a continuance to the Offright Road, Stratton Hill. Map 6, Prossels 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, 11 through 55, definitive subdivision and open space residential development plan. Applicant Fox Mill Realty Company and Multiconstruction Co., continuation from 10/10/23, 10/24/23, 11/14/23, and 1/9/24. The applicant has requested a continuance to the April 9th, 2024 Planning Board meeting. With that said, Mr. Chair, I'd like to read the letter from Attorney Collins.
Thank you.
So that we can take care of this.
Beautiful.
"To the Air Planning Board, Town Hall, 1 Main Street, Air Mass, 01432, regarding the Fox Mill Realty Corporation, Multiconstruction Corporation, Locust Stratton Hill, definitive subdivision, Right Road. Dear Board Members, much to my chagrin, I find that the end of the month has arrived and the plans are still being worked on. I am assured that Dulles and Roy's Civil Design Group will have the revised plans ready by the end of next month. Kindly, therefore, continue the hearing on this matter till the first meeting to be held in April, which I believe would be April 8th." He's incorrect, but I'm sure we'll communicate that to him. This should provide sufficiently time for Green International review and provide comments on the revised layout. Kindly also consider this letter as a request at the time by which the Board must complete its hearings and file a decision in this matter be extended until May 31st, 2024. Thanking the Board for its time and consideration, I remain very truly yours, Robert L. Collins." And the letter was dated 31 January 24.
Much appreciated. Danny, would you just make sure that Mr. Collins knows the correct date?
Yes, yes, I did let him know that. And this has also been posted up on the outside of the town clerk so that, just like it's posted.
Do we have to make a vote for the continuance? Yeah, we do. So do I have a motion for the continuance? You already made the motion. Did I get a second?
Seconded.
Mr. Diskin, how do you vote?
Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion?
There have been so many years of me saying, "Any discussion?"
Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Diskin?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. A discontinued. And then we have... Oh, bother, Danny, could you just explain to the public what just happened so they understand what's going on at Stratton Hill?
Yes, yes. So, the applicant... So, at the last meeting that we had with the applicant, which was in November, they had requested a continuance to the January 9th meeting. And at that meeting, they let us know that the plans were still not up to, you know, completed so that we could begin the process of the review. So they requested another continuance to today's date. And they also wrote another letter on January 31st letting us know that the plans would not be ready for today's date and to request another continuance, which would be to the April 9th meeting. And we're hopeful that between now and the April 9th meeting, we'll have plans submitted and begin the process with Green International doing their peer review.
Thank you very much, Danny.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
If you have stepped away from Stratton Hill and you're coming back, we're talking about plans for a completed, as we've seen it, a completed project below the power lines only. Correct.
Definitive subdivision.
Definitive subdivision below the power lines. Thank you.
Correct. Our next item on the agenda is 27 and 29 Harvard Road, and I believe they're seeking... Yes, they are seeking a continuance. Would you like to read that letter in, or shall I do that?
If you want. Move to continue. "The 27 and 29 Harvard Road, map 25, Prossels 2022, site plan, special permit, air zoning bylaw 6.2. Applicant 29 Harvard Road LLC, continued from 10/10/23, 10/24/23. The applicant has requested a continuance to the May 28th, 2024 Planning Board meeting." And there is also a letter from Attorney Gibbons regarding this to the Air... to the Town of Air Planning Board, February 16th, 2024, regarding 29 Harvard Road LLC, 27-29 Harvard Road, Air Mass, 01432. Our file number is 22-8003. Dear Honorable Members of the Town of Air Planning Board, pursuant to a conversation I had with Mr. Danny Ruiz, in which he informed me that the Planning Board will be sponsoring a warrant article for the Town of Air Springtown meeting for purposes of updating the Town of Air zoning map, which will update the zoning map to reflect the previous rezoning of the 27-29 Harvard Road property. Please accept this letter as 29 Harvard Road LLC's agreement with the Board to continue the public hearing regarding 29 Harvard Road LLC's application for site plan review and special permit to May 28th, 2024. In addition, this letter will serve as confirmation of the applicant's agreement that the time for the Planning Board to complete the review process and act upon the application is extended to June 27th, 2024. If you have any questions or concerns regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Very truly yours, Thomas A. Gibbons Esquire."
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay. And we got a second on your motion, sir?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? In fact, before the... Do you want to summarize this one as well for us before we take the vote?
Yes. So, at the last meeting we had with the applicant, there was a discussion that came up that the zoning map was never updated to reflect the citizens' petitions that were done at the... There was two town meetings that it was done at. One for 27 and one for 29 Harvard Road. Due to the fact that the zoning map was never updated, the rezoning is not legally done. So with this amendment that we're proposing for the updated zoning map, this would finally legally put that rezoning in place.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's please, Mr. Diskin.
So, just for clarification, Danny, the zoning map was updated and it was signed by us. But we found out after that 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 was not the adequate, complete work that needed to be done on the zoning map, that it needed to go through a town meeting.
Correct, yes.
But I can tell you that this board did update the zoning.
Yes, yes, yes.
And did sign the zoning.
Yes, no, no, no. You are correct. The... You guys did... The zoning map was updated and was signed by this board, but was not taken to town meeting and approved, which is the proper process. After town meeting approves it, then the board signs it.
Signed another one, right. But we were just not privy of that particular procedure at the time.
Exactly. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yep. It is arcane the way our laws work sometimes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Diskin?
Yes.
Yes.
Julie? Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, so we have a continuance to May 28th. Danny?
Yes.
Project status update for us, sir?
Yes. So, there's a couple of projects that may be coming before the site... The Planning Board for Site Plan Review. So, 33 Third Street will be coming before the Planning Board for a storm water management permit as well as Site Plan Review. And that was the... You did an A and R for this on... They were originally going to do two duplexes. Now they're going to be doing three single-family homes as well as updating the driveway, as we're calling it, in that area.
Driveway?
Road, street. It's gonna be considered a minor street, is what it's basically being considered. They're gonna be updating that, so there's gonna be stormwater. And then because they trigger the 10,000 square feet of grading, that will also have to be... That triggers Site Plan Review.
Okay. If I may, Danny, you said it was two duplexes. If I recall correctly, the plan was for two lots and one lot to remain empty.
Correct.
And now... So what they're going to do now is put a single-family on each one of the lots.
Correct.
Which is perfectly within their purview to do.
Yes.
It's unfortunate that we're gonna lose that open space next to the pond down there.
Yes. Thank you. And then we did have a meeting with the buyers, or the owners, of 91 Groton Harvard Road. They are... That's the property adjacent to the...
Transplantation.
Okay, yes, the old trucking company.
And they'll be coming before us for Site Plan Review.
And what's the number on that one?
91 Groton Harvard Road. That's a project, so they're going to be coming for Site Plan Review and storm water. They're proposing a new building. Parking layout, and so it'll be a nice upgrade. Air Solar 2 has made a submission for review on the wall and as-built and kind of trying to get the process moving along on closing out that project. We'll be meeting tomorrow with some of the departments to kind of go through the submission. And then we possibly will be reaching out to them about setting up a sidewalk. It may be good for the Planning Board to also be there as well. And I think that's it for project status updates right now.
Excellent.
Is there anything project-wise anyone wants to?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, on the Third Street, the three lots by Aho, are we saying that he has not pulled a building permit for any of the lots yet?
No, he has.
He has not?
He has.
He has?
Yes.
Okay. So he's pulled a building permit. During that process, he was made aware of the fact that he needed to do more in the way of permitting, storm water?
Yeah.
And...
We actually met out there, I believe it was two weeks ago. It was just about the week after I'd just gotten back to work. And we met out there, it was Charlie and I. Police, fire, and DPW were out there to discuss this. Yeah.
I just was curious if he pulled the building permits
Yes.
before we got the storm water, but he's not gonna go ahead till he gets the storm.
Exactly. It kind of came after the fact.
Okay.
Okay, good. Excellent. Good. Any other questions before we go out to the next item, Table of Use Regulations?
Do we hear anything more from the Soya, the Soya, on updates?
Oh, the Soya. So, Mr. Soya, I don't know if... I think I updated you guys last time, but I believe it was... So, they're looking for a, like, end of March, beginning of April submission for the amendment.
Okay.
Cool. Yes, sir?
I would like to ask a question. I'm not sure. Project status update. This is the MBTA zoning, which is going to be a Planning Board, I assume a Planning Board-sponsored update. We had a meeting. Have you spoken to... I don't know who's on top of the meeting.
So, we had a meeting with Mass Housing and a bunch of other people. Go ahead, Danny, if you don't mind. Yes. So, actually, I haven't updated the full board. I've spoken with you two at the meeting. Yes. We had a meeting with MHP to discuss the MBTA zoning and the requirement with the 10% in economic feasibility study. Coming out of that meeting, we felt that, basically, doing an economic feasibility study wouldn't be as helpful as we may have thought it would have been originally. And the only reason we have to do that is because of the 10%. If we have more than that of inclusionary housing requirement, then you get triggered into that economic feasibility study. So, coming out of that meeting, we thought about... There's two options kind of on the table. One is reworking the inclusionary housing bylaw for fall town meeting, which would then kind of change the requirements down to 10%, as well as some, a full read, you know, a full rewriting of the bylaw. And then if we felt that by the fall town meeting, we couldn't get the bylaw completely rewritten and, you know, felt good with it, there is a Plan B, which would be just to, within the inclusionary housing, change the section on the requirement from 20% to 10%.
In the MBTA zone.
Well, no, excuse me.
In the zones within which the MBTA would fall.
Correct.
What other communities have done, because they've had a different inclusionary law, the solution they've come up with is, we gotta rework our bylaw, but we gotta be done by the end of the year for MBTA. So communities have said, "In this area, we will have a different inclusionary number than that area." And it gives us an opportunity to get us to...
Yes.
To move us forward, be in the good stead of MBTA before the end of the year.
Yes, because our deadline for us being in compliance and submitting for the compliance is December 31st.
And there's another community out south of Boston, which I'm not gonna name, has already lost $2.9 million in grant funding. And will continuously lose money, week after week after week. And that would put us in such a bind. I'd like to see us find a way. It's not perfect, Mr. Diskin, but it gets us there.
Yeah.
I mean, the fact that we have an inclusionary zoning bylaw, which is odd for all the communities on this part of the rail line. They don't have one.
It's because we updated the zoning in 18...
Our zoning is... Our zoning, once again, is leading the way, so.
And, 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 yes, it's not the best solution if we can't get the inclusionary housing done, but it'll at least get us to that in-between stage to get us in compliance for the MBTA and then Springtown meeting having the full rewrite ready. In my opinion, I think we'll be able to get the fall... Get it ready for fall. We have some bylaws that we've been looking at that we like as templates and... Which is... So Salisbury is actually what MHP uses as their presentation, as their Core 1.4 towns, because of how well it works.
Yes, true.
And that's one of the ones we're actually...
Did you write that?
No, I didn't.
You should say you did.
So, that's one of the ones we're looking at trying to emulate.
Good, good.
And this is good news, sir. The good news is we have two opportunities to get it done before the end of the year.
Question, Danny?
Yes.
Could you briefly say again why the economic feasibility study is so onerous?
So, we actually... The way it works is you have to do an economic feasibility study for the entire town. Some towns have been doing it just for the MBTA zoning, but we have to do it for the full town, just because we're not creating an overlay like most towns are. There, we're using our form-based code, which is already existing. So, we have to take everything into account for how they look at inclusionary requirements, because we include the whole town. Where some towns are only including the MBTA zoning, they have a special inclusionary for that. We looked at Lexington, which was one of the towns that has done an economic feasibility study. And basically, they... Their feasibility study just told us exactly what ours would be, is this is not viable. The requirement is too high. Because they also... They have 15%, and theirs basically said that's too high. After you run all the numbers in all of these zoning areas through the mill, they came out at 12 and 17 or 15. They didn't make their numbers by a couple of units. They just... They wouldn't get the participation they were looking for. And we actually got into a fairly... We didn't get into a really deep conversation on this, but to spend about eight to 10 grand, not the 30 grand we thought we'd have to spend to go through this process, when we gotta be done by the end of the year, didn't seem like it made a lot of sense. And if it were a perfect world, we could do it in parallel. And if the economic feasibility study worked for us, we could stop. But do we spend eight grand on that or 10 grand on that? Well, and the eight grand would only look at the inclusionary housing within the form-based code. So, it's kind of a timing thing, if you will. And maybe our inclusionary numbers are a little bit...
Ambitious?
Altruistic.
Altruistic. So, I will have a couple of comments, but... Just for clarification, I think you might have gone a little bit too quick for the public here. But the long and the short of it is that our inclusionary zoning, you're saying to us, is more restrictive than the MBTA communities.
I wouldn't say more restrictive. I'd say it's...
The triggers are different.
The triggers are different in the sense of the cost for... And this is not me, this is what the state is saying. It's the cost of creating affordable housing, affordable units, is... The more you have, the higher requirement you have for those affordable units, the less...
Attractive.
Attractive it is for developers.
Okay, so that's what I was getting at.
If I may leap in, so the way I would phrase this is that this is a little bit counterintuitive.
Wicked.
It is counterintuitive, because you say, "Okay, remember, the goal is, we want to have more affordable housing, right? That's the goal." Now, to pursue that goal, we had an ambitious target of 20%. You know, any more unit, a building of any unit more than five, four, five, whatever it is, five units threshold, 20% have to be.
The sixth unit.
What's that?
The sixth unit, plus the bonus is changed, the number, and you get to 14.
So, you would think, oh, if you have a higher number, you get more affordable. But remember, we can't control the behavior of private property owners. So the state's acknowledgement is that, wait, hold on. If your numbers are so high that it discourages development, it then becomes counterproductive and you get zero or close to zero affordable units. So the thinking is that the town should be rather consistent around the 10% mark. Is what is it, the kind of understood to be acceptable? And the feeling is, yes, it's a lower number, but it's at a point where developers can see themselves making a profit and will entertain the possibility of developing, resulting in actually building affordable units. So that's what's going on.
That's an absolutely perfect description of it. The one piece that we didn't know about when we did this years ago, interest rates were very low.
Exactly.
Interest rates are up in the six, seven, and eight now.
Yeah.
And it just doesn't make sense to developers. We, even though we're a phenomenal place to live and a great place to build, other communities are more attractive financially, and that's where they're gonna go. And that's exactly what the economic feasibility study says. It doesn't say you did it right or you did it wrong. It's... There's no incentive for a developer to build in your area.
So, in essence, we will end up with a formula, a different formula, in the new bylaw. It'll basically say for, after you build 10 units, the 11th unit will be required, or something like that.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're very early on in it, but kind of some things we've been floating is, you know, 10% plus an incentive to go to 15%. Adding in an incentive to allow them to go to that high, and then they, you know, some... There's a trade-off.
And we left it with the meeting, and I can't think of the woman's name.
Katie.
Katie. I was with someone, Kira, all day.
Katie Lacy.
She is going to send us the... She has a model that developers use to ascertain whether or not it makes sense to go into a community. And she has models that help us understand what a 10% does. So we'll be... We'll get the work... We'll get the data we need to make this an open eye, a fully open-eyed decision.
Okay.
And it's just, it just really doesn't make sense to do a feasibility study.
The thing that's fascinating is, and probably what's behind a lot of this, is the fact that we did, and we've talked about this with the Affordable Housing Group, we did pass that inclusionary housing, and we haven't got an application for it. Except we did have one application on West Main.
Which was West Main.
Okay. So that did pretty much comply with the requirement. I've got a number of... So if we go to a... This is a technical thing, which I tend to get into. You go to a fall town meeting. Is there a requirement for zoning when you pass it at the meeting that it immediately goes into effect? Or do we have to wait that six-month period for the Attorney General to approve the zoning change?
So, tech...
We would still make it for the MBTA.
We would still make it for the MBTA zoning. It still has to pass the AG. But we would already have our compliance form all filled out and everything ready by, before, you know, by then.
They're not gonna penalize us if we're doing it on the way to getting there.
The need to do this was triggered by our compliance forms. So we've known about it, they know about it right now. A simple aside is, this is a hot topic Commonwealth-wide right now. So I don't think there's anybody in EOLHC or whatever, did I forget the name?
The new one.
EOHCL.
EOHCL. I get it wrong all the time. Is going to say to us, "You didn't make it by December 28th. You're in trouble." I think everyone, given what happened a few weeks ago in that town south of Boston, they're working with people. They have to.
Yeah.
And we honestly... It was so happy the day you and I were talking on the phone a long time ago, we realized we qualified.
Yeah, we thought we did.
We did. It was a court challenge in Lexington.
Yes, yes.
That caused us to end up in that point.
Yes.
Economic feasibility studies were not even on the table when they wrote the law.
It's new.
It's very new. But it makes sense. And it was... It's driven by costs of materials. And interest rates have changed dramatically in the world. That's why we don't have any building up here. I'm sorry.
That's all. Just one more. Mr. Podbrand is in the room with us tonight. I just noticed him over there. And he'll verify that there's a Devens reused jurisdictional group that's working on a lot of concepts. And they just voted, interestingly enough, to agree that Devens would have their minimum requirement for affordable, which is 25%.
Holy mackerel.
And that's been in Devens for the... From the very start of the Devens documents. So everything in Devens that they build requires a 25% minimum. So is that going to change when, because of the MBTA communities? Or are we gonna have a place right next to us?
So technically, remember, Devens is not a town. So it's treated very differently.
Okay.
I'm sure there's a way different way they're treating it, because Devens is not an actual town or a city in the Commonwealth. It's a... What is it?
It's an economic development area. And so one of the things I'll also, and if I'm sorry to jump in, Devens doesn't have the same cost structure that a community like this has. Mass Development's more than willing to sell you land. So if your land costs are very low, it changes the... And I'm not saying that's what they're doing, but Devens Enterprise and Mass Development are doing their best to make that attractive over there. You live in Devens, you don't pay an electric bill, you pay an agreed-upon price for electricity. You don't pay a water bill, you pay an agreed-upon price for water. These are the things that we're struggling with to figure out where we go forward with the resolution and stuff. So Devens economically looks like a very different animal than Shirley, Lancaster, Harvard, Air, and Groton.
So good work that we've done in the past gets blown up by a state regulation regarding MBTA communities. It's basically, you might have to start and do another series of stuff. So that's enough. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I thank you. I do wish to bring us back to the agenda.
Sorry to get us on, but I thought it was important we got that on the table today. Thank you.
Danny, we just... Can you bring us up to date on where we are at the Table of Use Regulations?
Yes.
Can you bring a copy with you, by chance?
I have it.
On the website that I can pull up.
I didn't think we were... I don't think we're gonna really get into it. I think we're...
If you don't need to, we don't need to.
That's fine. Yeah, it's just gonna be merely an update on the process.
Just where we are now.
So we, Janet, Ken, and I all made a presentation to the zoning board at their last meeting and gave the presentation on the Table of Use and Inclusionary Housing. We've invited them to the public hearing on March 12th. So the Planning Board will be having the public hearing for the four zoning amendments on March 12th. There's also going to be a presentation to the Select Board on March 6th. So everyone is welcome to come, voice your opinions. The... Once we get through... Depending on how March 12th goes, we may either, you know, vote or continue on that day to... And the next meeting would be March 26th. We want to make sure we get as much input on this, these zoning amendments. They'll also be at the March 12th meeting. We'll have Alicia Hershey. We'll have Alan Menowen, Charlie Schultz. All give presentations on how we came to these conclusions on the Table of Uses and as well as the inclusionary housing.
Okay. So I have a question.
Yes.
And I don't know this off the top of my head. And town meeting is April 22nd.
Yep.
If we continue a meeting from March 26th, that's within 30 days of town meeting, are we going to be in trouble?
No, the warrant closes April...
29th. Am I correct?
March 29th.
March 29th, excuse me. So we just need to have... So we need to have just had the...
I just want to make sure that we're all not gonna get messed up.
The vote...
26th would be the latest we can vote.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, great. There's a chance that we could get that done in one night, wouldn't we?
Oh, no, I agree. I do agree. I just want to make sure... I want to make sure that there's enough ability for input, is all I want to make sure.
I also believe that the March 6th meeting, we're gonna present Kathleen as an associate member.
Yes, yes. The presentation to the Select Board of Kathleen for the associate member. The presentation to the select board of Kathleen for the associate member. I did write up a memo that can go, that'll be going over to the select board for the meeting, giving them an update as to kind of the process that we did. And so when it goes to the select board, it's a vote, a majority vote with them. And then we'll discuss the term and when you get sworn in and all that stuff after.
It's March 5th, it's a Tuesday.
March 6th, because 5th is election.
5th is election, everything shifted in.
CPC.
The 6th.
And public hearings, or is it before here?
Through the chair, the select, the select board is meeting on Wednesday, March 6th at 5:30.
Yes, it's different.
Correct.
And then we have the CPC at 7. It's a, it's a light agenda, select board.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
What's up?
When you go to the select board before we open the public hearing.
Yes.
Are you just going to be giving them a summary that we've worked on these different concepts, but clearly we haven't made a vote yet, so?
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. So the process, typically it works is when there is a proposed warrant article, it goes to the select board on the 6th is when they'll be approving the, based, a zoning amendment, let me, let me correct that, a zoning amendment, since we have four zoning amendments, those go to the select board prior to the public hearing for the planning board. And since it, it just worked out that March 6th was the meeting for the select board, we would meet on the 6th with them, present it to them, and they okay the, the articles. And then it goes to the public hearing on the planning board. So they're not actually voting on the merits of the article, they're just okaying the article to the planning board to be able to have the public hearing.
So they're basically just giving us a spot on the warrant for the article?
Yes, correct.
Because the language of the article won't be worked out or the final definition of the table.
Correct, correct, correct. There is, there is an actual, you know, write-up on what the articles are, but the substance of the articles is not technically within them.
Okay, thank you.
Want me to explain why that is?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Thanks.
As an aside, I will later.
So then we rewrite the law and make it the right way?
It's because of town meeting and.
We'll talk about it after the meeting.
So it's an extension of.
Motion.
So.
I was kidding.
You know, we've been working through different parts of the bylaw and thinking about things that we can improve, update, present for town meeting, et cetera. And in that spirit, we have another item, which is the minor site plan review, which is something we've discussed before that we need. And Danny's going to lead us through an opening discussion about minor versus major. And for me, you know, I especially appreciate an understanding of definitions, which I think we started the compile here.
Yeah, so what I, so the two documents kind of I've given you guys is, there's a, you know, the major SPR versus minor SPR, which was the comparisons of different towns and what they do for triggers. And the other document I've given you is our bylaw on what the triggers are for site plan review and what the exceptions are. And then below that is something that I put together on what I think the triggers could look like. And I highlighted the sections in which, you know, are subjective to the board on what we think those numbers could be higher or lower, on what the trigger actually is. So the way, so if we want to kind of just go through the first one for proposed major site plan review.
So if I may jump in, the thing I'm looking for here is an understanding of the reasoning behind why something is major versus why something is minor. Like what's the thinking? So it's not just arriving at an arbitrary number, but somehow that threshold means something?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And that's, that's why I kind of highlighted these because everyone's going to have a little bit of a subjective feeling towards the trigger and what makes it major, what makes it minor. So kind of, so typically what you'll see is the triggers are related to parking space, square footage, special permits, stuff like that. So kind of for major, what I, what I have in here is similar to what we have now, which is new construction or any alteration, reconstruction, renovation, and/or change in use of multifamily, commercial, industrial, institutional, or municipal building or use which involves one of the, one or more of the following. So if you have a, if you have a, you know, new construction or alteration, basically of this, if you trigger the addition of 2,500 square feet or more of gross floor area or the addition of 10 or new, 10 or more new parking spaces. And the reason I use those numbers is that's kind of, that's what we have, it's close to what we have up above on 3.512. We say that involving five or more new additional parking spaces, I feel that's a little too low for major site plan review because you could have a small, you know, 1,500 square foot building, commercial building that gets proposed that has, you know, five parking, six parking spaces, but is not a huge impact. It's something that would really only require a minor site plan review, which is not the full process of, of the planning board with, you know, public hearings and, and project review fees and it, there's a little bit of a, a bigger barrier to kind of get hurdle to get over for major. Minor is small projects that don't really have a big impact. And that's kind of just like my difference, how I differentiate between the two. But once again, the board is all, can be, this is subjective. The other triggers we had, I had was the redesign, alteration, expansion, or modification of an existing parking area involving the addition of 10 or more new parking spaces. The 10 or more can be changed however, way we want it. And basically what you'll see is in the minor, it kind of reflects the numbers just below the trigger. So if it has, here we say 10 or more, the minor would be, you know, less than 10.
Right.
The redesign of the layout and, layout or configuration of an existing parking area of 30 or more parking spaces. And that, the reason I added that in is because that has a lot of an effect on traffic, the site layout, the way it kind of works, making sure safety with 30 parking spaces, you're changing quite a bit.
That's, I would agree, that's significant, yes.
Construction of ground-mounted solar voltaic installations of any size in any zone district, including solar canopy type systems in our, in parking areas. We didn't even have a trigger for site plan review for solar, so I felt.
I think we do, don't we, under the solar bylaw section?
So under, so maybe we do, but based, but under site plan review in our section, it did not have an actual trigger. There's a couple of things that were missing, just like with stormwater, which I'll also get to, is was not shown within our triggers of site plan review. So you might be right. I did not see it.
We, we defined it as major and minor under the solar as well and tried to definitely require it for bigger projects, but not for somebody's house.
No, no. You're right. Anything small like that, we, so maybe we, maybe that's one of them that we can differentiate one as minor.
We've got a whole table here of what's required under.
What page is that?
I mean, would.
Well, it's 66 in my thing, but I don't know.
Would your, your solar panels then come under major site plan review?
And that, so that's, that's where we need to.
Yeah, because that would be, I would say that would be, feels minor to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You might want to do like a 10 kilowatt.
Yeah, I think we need to put a number on that because just someone putting in a simple residential use only kind of solar panels is, to me, the, the major site plan for solar is.
We can do it legally, to be honest with you.
Site plan review?
No, solar. Solar gets such a precedent in the state that it's pretty, we controlled it with the bylaw because we had to put a bylaw around because we didn't have one. Eight, section eight.
I mean, I've seen many other towns that have done it, but if, if we feel we don't want to, that's, that's okay by me. I'm just trying to find where, so where's the actual trigger?
For solar?
So air plant may approve solar energy systems requiring either site plan approval or special permit. So.
In the section, meeting the site and.
So large scale is basically where we trigger it. So if we, so I can, so I can change that to say large scale. Because I also want to make sure that our site plan review triggers kind of line up with everything else that we have within our bylaw.
So even if you say large scale, that has to be defined, what large scale means?
And that, well, large scale is defined, is defined within our, yeah, it's right here. Large-scale ground-mounted solar energies shall adhere to the same, uh, duh, 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 duh. Yeah, there's an actual section on it.
So one of the, as I read, as I read through this and glanced through it, one of the things I think about solar is the discussion of solar, pervious or impervious area.
Could someone hit continue recording? Uh, just, thank you.
Continue recording.
Oh, and Zoom died. The, it lasted a while.
It was really popular tonight.
In a discussion about solar. Solar panels, are they considered pervious or impervious? The only name that's sitting on.
Well, there's a difference. So the way we consider, I mean, based on how I look at it, the panels are considered impervious.
That's right.
Underneath it is, is pervious.
It's pervious.
Yeah. But typically with stormwater, there's, they account for that based on the square footage of the panel. So a triggering might be certain number of square feet of panels. Impervious, impervious surface. Well, so we already have, so we already actually have it listed in here as to large scale is the trigger. So I think we just put in large scale and follow what our bylaw actually says.
Okay. Do we define large scale?
Yes.
There's a definition in the actual bylaw.
Okay.
For this. So when we have a residential person who wants to put in 8,000 square feet of panels because they have space on their property, I'm sure.
Well, they still have to comply with the solar bylaw.
Yeah, they still have to, they still have to comply with the solar bylaw. And it's based on kilowatts. So this one, a medium scale is 1,700, but less than 40,000 square feet.
Got it, thank you.
So, through the chair.
Yes, please.
So in your experience, you've found that you need to define this solar, that's why you're putting it in there.
Yes.
From other towns, sort of the case management.
Yes, yeah. Because, so there's a couple of other towns in our, in my breakdown that had to, that defined it for site plan review and what was a trigger for it?
Even though we already had it and.
Yeah, but, and so I agree with you, we already have it in here, but within, on 3.51, it's not shown as one of our triggers. So I, that's one of the things we'll have to update as, you know, as, you know, as the, as the planning board for a zoning amendment, we'll have to update that eventually. But we can, we can show that on our applications as these are the triggers so that that is at least shown. And then also under our site plan review regulations, which we also can amend by public hearing, then we'll show them there. But to actually change, amend the bylaw, we'll have to do an actual zoning amendment for that.
I'm confused about the clearing and grading.
Yes. So this was something I wanted to talk to the board about as well. So there is, so we have a trigger which, so if you have more than 10,000 square feet, you trigger site plan, a site plan review. But that's not exactly how it's worded. It's, it actually states that a site plan must be created and presented to the planning board.
So that's going to be stuck, if that's the only, so what I'm confused about is that would trigger a minor rather than a major if it's only the, this grading and not the other qualities like gross floor area, et cetera?
Yeah, so this is, this is where, like 33/3, like on that.
Yep.
They're being triggered because of the 10,000 square foot clearing.
Okay, right.
That's what's triggering them to, to get to site plan review.
Oh, I see where you're going.
So I don't want to burden someone that has something like that small to have to go through the full process of site plan review. It's, I figure it's something minor, but this is where we kind of, this is why I put it on there because we need to talk about, well, what triggers a major? And I think what we're having some issue, what I, at least what I'm having some issue is, we have some inconsistencies on kind of triggers and, and how do we make it so one's minor, one's major because the same thing is happening with the stormwater.
And also just to kind of take a step backwards, there seems to be two different components of this. First, you decide what the triggers are, what goes to major, what goes to minor, but then there is, well, what's, what's the site plan review consist of?
Yes.
And I'm assuming that the major site plan is consistent with what we currently have and that the minor site plan review would be some kind of diminished.
Correct.
Yet to be determined.
Correct.
Okay, good. I just want to be sure.
Yeah, so the first step is determining what the triggers are and then determining, you know, what the, what the subjective portion of those triggers are. And then it will be coming up with the process for minor because.
Right, what would make it?
Some of the triggers will change what the process is.
Right. So that's logical, except here's the thing, part of our thinking about goes major and minor has to do with the consequences of the site plan review itself. That is, one of the reasons that we don't want something minor to go through the site, major site plan review is to reduce the amount of work necessary.
Correct.
So in fact, we are kind of cognizant in our heads of what the consequences are even before we go in and make the definition of what goes where.
Yeah.
Because we're saying, you know, if it's only this, the land clearing and they're not building a structure, for example, why put them through X full set of engineering plants, et cetera? So it is kind of a, a, a good, I, I know that there's a set of order, the triggers first, then the substance, but in some sense, we have to be aware of what that substance might look like to under, you know what I mean?
Yes, yes.
The triggers.
Yeah, it's kind of like a chicken or the egg kind of thing, but you kind of have to work with both in your mind.
We do, we do.
It's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to really, and that's why coming up with major and minor, you know, triggers and, and creating a bylaw for it, it takes a lot of time.
Right, we're not going to get this done tonight.
No, no.
I'm teasing right there. But it is, but the reason I raise these issues is because these are exact, if, if the point of this exercise tonight is to get us thinking about it, that's why I want to raise these, these broader issues upfront rather than deferring them to the end and suddenly go, oh, wait a minute. So here we are, what, Nathan, go ahead.
Understand that is the intent, that a minor site plan review is generally one meeting with the planning board, whereas a major is going to be typically multiple.
Yeah.
That's a great way of thinking about it.
And that, I would agree with that. It's, you know, it's one to two meetings at most.
At most.
You know, at most. Because really the review process, most of the review has already been done by DPW prior and myself. And, and most of it's kind of, it's really going to be very minor things.
Right.
You know, there's not a traffic, you know, a, a peer review for a traffic study. It's not going to have, you know, a, a big stormwater, you know, stormwater document that we're going to be reviewing because mostly, and that's what I'll, I'll also get into, is like, that's probably a trigger for a minor site plan, a minor stormwater permit.
So I would just hold that in your head.
Exactly.
Guide us through this, that does it state within generally one meeting?
Yeah.
I like that, you know, I hope that gets into the minutes because, so I don't forget it later because I like that as a, as a kind of way of thinking about it. Major is so much work that requires more than a meeting. Major is so much work that requires more than a meeting. A minor is that you can legitimately reasonably expect that it could be wrapped up in a meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you, Nathan.
You're doing this for the simple reason that you think that some applications are going to be smaller and therefore they don't need site plan review. That's what's driving it.
Well, not that they don't need site plan review, they just don't need such an extensive review.
We want to be economically feasible here.
Yeah.
So when we, I think we should back up a little bit and the state, site plan review, as we know, is a, in itself, a review process.
Yep.
And you have to do something really bad to get denied site plan review.
Yes.
Site plan review is typically has a lower standing than even I think a special permit.
And, and that's why it's called site plan review. Well, it's, it's actually called site plan approval, not site plan review, but it's actually site plan approval. And to deny it, the only way you can deny an application is if, you know, safety, lack of information.
Real bad application.
Or an incomplete, you know.
Or fails to conform.
Yes.
So when we break this down.
Yep.
If you want to call it site plan approval, then you're sub, you're basically creating a subset that may not, may not even exist under the state definitions, major and minor. Are we saying that we can do that as a board? We can actually create two levels of?
Yes, we can. So many, many towns in, in the state of Massachusetts have, have done this. It's been passed, I mean, it's, it's been approved at, by AGs, so.
I actually think they call it one stop.
No, that's.
For minor and stuff. They have a different name for it. They're, so they call it minor, but, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just.
Yeah, you have a meeting, you go to, you have a meeting with your planner. Yeah, so there's even times where some towns have administrative approvals, which is just done by the planner.
Wow.
On a smaller project, which.
So like form basis.
Like, there's a lot of different, towns do it differently. There's some that will do just administrative and major, administrative, minor and major, you know, just major and minor. So there's a variety on how they do it. And it's just to make it, you know, easier for the applicant. You know, we don't want to make a project that is like twenty-seven, twenty-nine Harvard. That is a perfect minor site plan review. That is something that could have been done in one meeting, in and out, or even two meetings because they made some minor changes that the board asked for. And then on the second meeting, they would have been all set, and then we would have been moving forward. That would, that's a perfect example of a minor. A major is West Main Street, Stratton Hill, you know, like projects of that complexity where you know a peer review is going to be needed. There's a traffic study, there's a storm, a major stormwater management permit. There's, you know, there's going to be a lot of questions about you know, utilities, you know, what's the impacts? That's where, that usually tells you that's a project that's going to be a major.
Well, I, I feel comfortable, there has to be a certain level of subjectivity. There's no way you could ever write down numerically the exact precision. I think the standard, though, for, the public would expect is that a reasonable prudent person would go, yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, of course, that's major, you know, I mean, of course it requires that. I mean, as long as it meets that standard, the subjectivity doesn't necessarily have to be a bad thing. It's a necessary.
And what also helps with the minor site plan review is, it's not a public hearing. It's a public meeting. So you don't have the process of sending out for legal notices, waiting the whole two, you know, two weeks or, because.
The bottom notification. Bottom notification is not required by state law.
No, it's not.
We do, we require it.
We do locally. Yeah, we require it for site plan review. We wouldn't if we're a minor. And so, you know, there's, it, it, it doesn't burden the applicant as much. You know, bigger projects with bigger impacts, you'd expect a bottom notifications because you want to make sure that, that, the, the residents in the neighborhood know about the project. With a small, like twenty-seven, twenty-nine Harvard, I, I don't even think you would need to, like, there's no notifications that would be necessary for that.
When that started.
The neighbors are pretty quiet. I was going to say, the neighbors are pretty quiet.
The neighbors are pretty quiet during the process.
Yeah, I haven't heard any complaints from them in quite a while.
The butters had to fill us in.
Yeah, so, that's kind of like the process that I've been looking at and, and kind of determining, you know, these triggers. It's, it, it's going to take a lot of work of going back and forth because everyone's going to have their differing opinions on some of these triggers, you know, you may add, you may want to add other triggers, you may want to remove triggers. And this is kind of just the start of the process.
I'm fascinated by the different towns that you have in here.
And what they have, what we're triggering.
Absolutely.
And what they allow. Yes, some of these.
You can actually take a look at a town and figure out what's important to them.
Yeah.
Or what just happened recently?
Yeah, exactly. So. Some of these towns, like, some of them are just have not, really nothing that triggers, you know, some of them are just.
I don't want to dive, I don't want to dive in, and I'm going to, I'm going to assume because towns closest to us aren't on this list because they don't differentiate between minor and major.
Yeah, yeah, so I tried to find all of the, as many towns that I could, that were a variety of types of towns and cities so that we could see kind of the different triggers. I don't want to get everything the same so that it all looks.
I appreciate that. It's just variety. My experience in this town is, somebody's going to ask, well, how come Harvard, Shirley, Lancaster, Devens aren't on this list?
Yes, yes.
Because they, because they don't do what we do.
They don't.
They're, we're, once again, we're pioneers.
Well said. That's right.
Mr. Chair.
Please, Mr. Diskin.
Okay, so, I hate to say this negatively, but I don't think we have to make any change here, but I'll go with.
Yeah, but talk about why. No, no, talk about your reasons.
Because I like the control that's in this list. And I have personal experience with the ten thousand.
Tell us about it, if you don't mind.
Well, this list, which came about actually when we.
What are you pointing to?
That's what the problem is. What are we pointing to? Yeah, we're pointing to the list of applicability.
Three point five one, which is at the top of.
I just want, I didn't know which paper he had.
It's this one, yeah. It's the same one he handed out. So clearing and grading of more than ten thousand square feet unless specifically exempt, and the exemption is some kind of. So, this particular situation actually came up with Air Solar Two. Excuse me, Air Solar One.
Okay.
First one, okay? No, it was two. It was both of them, actually. But one went through without site plan approval. Because we didn't even have language that would require a site plan approval because we had no solar bylaw. Okay? So it was allowed in every district.
Because of the state, yeah.
Charlie Schultz, Mr. Schultz, determined that the same situation applied to Air Solar Two. This list was published as a change to the site plan review process just prior to the approval of Solar Two.
Okay.
I contended that Charlie Schultz was wrong. And we went to the zoning board of appeals. And because that said ten thousand clearing, they required Charlie to undo his decision and make that a requirement of site plan review. So had we not had this.
Yep.
And had I not gone through it, there would have been no site plan review on Air Solar Two. I would have been sitting here, looking at a project of that scope. So, if you were going to, what I would recommend here is that we keep the ten. But in the second page, I'm baffled by the, by the fact that in the second one, why we took it out of the first and put it in the minor, I thought the minor should say clearing or grading of less than ten thousand square feet.
Yeah, so, and, and that's, this is why I completely, this is why I completely.
That's, that's.
I just.
Because I had twenty minutes.
This is, this is, this is what I was talking about, like, this is what I want to talk about because I just put it in there based on how it worded in our bylaw. And I said, that's what I want to talk to you guys about, is the subjectivity portion of this. It's the actual numbers. I, and I agree with you about the, you know, that, you know, the ten thousand is why it was triggered, but that's why I'm adding the, the construction of a large scale ground mountain solar would be major.
But what I'm saying is any, I'm content with the fact that this has five or more spaces, the ten thousand and so forth, what's in here. Then potentially we could just create a minor group, but not change this group at all. So just say, okay, here's our applicability, this is A. Then if you wanted to put in B, you know, applicability for smaller scale, and then we just decide what those numbers are.
But I guess the problem is, you have totally different, you know, triggers for major, totally different triggers for minor. There's no melding of the two, there's no cohesiveness. And that's why you typically, that's why I gave you all these examples. All of these triggers are typically based on a set of a number, or that way, when you get to minor, it's usually under that major trigger. It's under that number. It's, there's, there's kind of a cohesiveness between the two. Because if you kind of just keep these, I don't know how I make minor for a construction of alteration. Like, number one, how do I make a minor one for that?
Well, that's, that's what you and I disagree on. Unfortunately, I don't necessarily think we need a minor, but that's.
Actually.
Besides the point. You know, I'll go with it.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to both and I'm not going to, you're not going to, we'll cut the baby in half before we get to the end of this conversation. But I have a question for you.
Yeah.
The, is there a crying need for a minor and a major?
So, is there a crying need? I'd say, I should, is there a pressing need, I shouldn't say crying. So, as a pressing need, so this is not something that, as you know, we've, I've been rushing through to the board. It's something that we've been trying to work over time and take it slowly. This was something that was given to me by my predecessor that the board wanted to do. And that's the only reason, and so, I just want to make sure.
So I remember we did have this kind of conversation before.
So I, I don't know if the conversation has to take place now or not. One of the challenges we had in, in our, in our previous constituency is, we didn't have, I don't know how to put it. We felt like putting in guardrails was an important part to help the, help the person in the job do a better job.
Okay.
And better support the town. With that being said, I would ask the question, is this, does this still have the same immediacy in our minds that it had back then? And this may get to.
This is something I think the board needs to speak to.
And this may get to the gist of what Mr. Diskin is talking about.
And, and just in my personal opinion, I don't see anything wrong with having major and minor because I want to do what's, what's going to help applicants, because we're not only talking developers here, we're talking.
Absolutely.
Our neighbors.
We're talking about our neighbors, like a small pharmacy owner or a small.
No, we're talking about our residents and. And that's, and so, in my opinion, it's not something that needs to be done ASAP, but it's something that I think does need to be done.
Okay, and I'm sorry to kind of get us off the, off the path.
Yeah, no, no, you're not.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking, why, you know, why was this here? This may have come out of a frustration with where we found ourselves during a period of time when we had a lot of things in front of us. And we, we're trying to sort it out.
Yeah.
Okay? Planning changes constantly.
Yes, we know that.
Yes, it does.
So, I'm open minded about changing some of the stuff and applicability. With changes comes more or less control, depending on how you look at it. I think we've got a couple of things ahead of us this year that are pretty important. And I would ask, I, I just ask the question, is this something that we want to take time on now versus if we let this go for a couple of months and focus on some other? I'm not trying to spend your time, Danny, but I know you're really busy. And, and, and I would just ask that question. Where, where does this fit in the importance world?
So.
And let me just.
Yeah.
This is not something, so, I'm, I can manage my time and this is something I don't think is going to take too much time.
Out of an idea.
Just so that you guys know.
So what I'm thinking is, since this isn't urgent, like on fire right now.
Correct, yeah.
But I still think it's in the realm of significant. You know, would it, would this be the ideal occasion where I'd love to have a third party expert give us, you know, ten minutes of education? This is a perfect topic where I'd love to have someone come in and talk about, this is our experience with major, minor, and how it's worked out.
Okay.
Would that be?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just suggesting, I want to hear from my colleagues whether that's a bad idea or not, or a good idea. I, I know, I'm speaking personally, I would like some more education on this because there's a couple, what you're really saying is, there are two options, we're moving to three, because the options that are currently is site plan review or no review. We're creating a third one, major, minor, and none. Mr. Diskin is making an argument, if we have major, you know, site plan and none, that may be enough. So what I'd like is a little bit, I would like to know more, say, well, what, what happens when you go from two, to two options to three options? And how does that materially work out? Does it successfully result, I think, if we're successful, what it does is, it makes it easier for our neighbors and residents to get minor things done without the hassles and the expense that are necessary for significant life altering projects or town altering projects, et cetera. Go ahead, Joe.
If I may. For, for instance, I own an acre of land. I'm in a zoning area that if we allowed multi, multi-unitary dwellings, I could do it. Is it a minor if I decide to build something that's only seven hundred, seven hundred forty-nine square feet? And I don't clear, and I don't clear, the, I don't, I don't hit the clearing ten thousand, just to pick a couple off the top. What is the impact on my neighborhood? What is the impact on my neighbors? I could, I could build a concrete bunker because, and this is a worst case scenario, okay? I could bring in two containers, weld them together, paint on the outside, put up, put up some furring and some, and some, and some shingling on it, call it a domicile. So, I want to think about this?
Yeah, I do too.
Okay? So, because we're, we're, we're looking at going down a couple of roads here, and I think, I think they're complementary. And I think it's important to, my vote would be, let's do them in the order of, let's, let's get the, figure out what we want to do with A two and A one and special permits and stuff like that. And then go, and then dive in on this. That's just my view. I apologize for being forceful. I'm not saying you're not doing a good job, Danny.
No, 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 no. And I, believe me.
You're doing a great job.
I'm, I'm, I'm here to help the board. Whatever the board wants to do, I'm, you know. Just let me know.
I got it. It's stunning to see that we're getting work done.
I know, it's phenomenal.
You knocked me over with a bat, Danny.
What do you, Julie, what do you think? Any, any thoughts?
I think we've talked about this now a few times. And so I'm all for more information or taking a pause if it's not necessary. I guess I just want to, my feeling is if we're going to go at this conversation one more time, we should just be ready to have it and make, like, with an import, like, whether you want more information or. But I think we've also talked about it enough that if the answer is just to step back from this project, I feel like we could just decide that tonight too, and.
I just think with looking at inclusionary and looking at the opportunity the town may take to create multi, multi dwelling applicability in other parts of our use stable, this would, if someone said, you're turning, you're getting rid of single family housing, we aren't. But minor versus major lowers the bar on smaller secondary units on a property. We have, we have accessory dwelling and stuff like that. Accessory dwelling would be a minor.
No, I think it's.
Excuse me?
No, single family is exempt.
They're all exempt.
Single family, Jupe family are exempt.
They're exempt from this.
Got it, okay. Yeah, there's an exemption in our bylaw, it exists.
So it's primarily, we're talking about commercial projects.
Yes.
That's the intent of site.
Yeah, that's the intent.
Okay.
It's a commercial project type application.
Yeah.
People who would have an addition on a building.
That's, that's why I use twenty-seven and twenty-nine Harvard as an example.
Yeah.
Like, it's a commercial use, it really, the changes there are really minute. Or if we were to talk about a small, say like the, the Air family pharmacy right here, if they wanted to make, if they wanted to tear that down and, and build a new small, you know, new pharmacy, that's something that would be minor.
I think, if I may, if I may make a proposal.
They did Bishop Road before you came on, and that was just a change of use that, and it goes to.
Yeah, see, so. Like that.
The kind of, here's, here's a kind of felt sense that I'm getting from this meeting. One is, there is interest in this.
Yes.
However, we also have a number of more urgent things that we need to get across the finish line. So what I would propose is this, in, in just a few weeks, we're going to have the opportunity to go to, to Holy Cross for CPTC.
I'm wondering if they have something like that, yeah.
Yeah, and, and what that means is that we're also going to have the opportunity to meet with a lot of different people. So what I, what I would recommend is this. I would say, I would like to defer further conversation deliberation on this. However, but with the promise that we are going to complete, fulfill that within the next three months, let's say that, that we will have some kind of informal education session about this issue, so that can help us be better prepared to have the, to do this, to get this, this settled one way or another. And then the vote might be, nah, we've learned and we decided, no, we don't have a need. But I want to be able to make an informed decision one way or the other. So I think the interim step, especially since CPTC is just around the corner, and it gives us the opportunity to find someone capable of doing this. Right? I think that's what we should do. Our next step would be more education, and then after we've got past the town meeting finish line for, for the spring, we can revisit the major, minor.
Yeah.
Does that sound like a reasonable plan?
Sounds like a good plan, but I would endorse the fact that we have an expert at the table with us in Danny Ruiz.
And, and, and no.
We agree on that, it's up to us, but.
No, no, no. In no way am I saying more education is in any way insulting or meant to do.
No, no, I'm not saying that.
No, 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 no. And we do have, right.
He was saying we need more education.
No, I didn't say he did. Right. And I said, and very personally, I said, I, I certainly don't feel informed enough. Like, there's, there's a lot I wish to get my head around.
Yeah, of course.
Mr. Chair.
Please, sir.
I would want more information on the why, particularly if this is commercial leaning and small business leaning. You know, are there opportunities like Bishop Road and others that are not attractive? Because for economic reasons, because the, the planning, the site plan, the site plan approval is onerous?
So, so like with, let's just use, so I don't know Bishop Road, I don't know.
American True Mary.
I know they were doing a change of use.[1751.14] For a change of use, something like that, Charlie and I both have talked about this. We agree that it's not something that I think requires site plan review.
But Danny, I'm not really asking what the method is.
Okay.
Is there demand?
See, that's an interesting question, right?
Is there demand for...
How many parcels does this apply to?
Are there parcels out there that, in buildings that, like the cleaners, if you just drive down the road, like, would somebody, would a small business want to come into this building, change its use, add parking?
Yes.
Put up solar, whatever it is that they want to do? Are there opportunities in this town for small businesses?
Yes, yes. I mean, especially with change of use triggers.
So I think if we could quantify that or show some examples.
I mean, so...
Then there'd be a reason to have this bylaw.
It's kind of hard to quantify that because, so with, like, with change of use, that can happen with any business, any property. So to quantify change of use, I don't know how you do that. Any property that's over here that's owned Santander.
Let me put it another way, are people coming in, they're coming to Charlie first, right?
Yes.
Just if Charlie's like, yeah, I've turned down so many because when they hear that they have to do a site plan review, they walk away. Do we have examples of it?
Yeah, I can talk to Charlie.
I think that'd be worthwhile.
Yeah, I can talk to Charlie about that and see if he has, you know... The only reason I know about, like, he talked to me about the change of use was just specifically because of Harvard Road. So I didn't ask him about what happened prior and any other uses. So it's something I can definitely talk to him about. But just from his personal opinion, that's something he did tell me about that.
Okay.
I knew from the deck what the business would be doing in five years, huh?
Okay, good.
I noticed we don't have any minutes on the agenda today.
It's on the back page.
Yeah, it's on the back page. It was printed...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's double sided.
Yeah, it was double sided.
Double sided. So I think that's the last remaining... I believe that's the last remaining agenda item. So do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February?
Move to approve February 13th, 2024, meeting minutes as presented.
Before we vote, I just wanted to clarify that the one that everyone's seeing is the one in which I responded to the comments from Mr. Diskin? Okay, great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chairman says aye.
And thank you, Mr. Diskin, for finding that.
That was a good one.
MVP, yes.
Thank you so much. And motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a wonderful evening, everyone. Thank you so much.